Welcome to the Constitution of the United States of America. In due republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
President.
President.
And this is Hope. This is Bobsey. How's that? This is Dirk.
President.
Okay. Item four is an option or amendment of agenda. We have two items on here. Item A is to do business with the GSRP contracts. Item B is student number 2019 20-1 disciplinary hearing. And I would like to remove item 11, I'm sorry, item 14 superintendent evaluation. And table that until April, or January 13th. So I move to adopt or amend the agenda for December 17th, 2019 regular board meeting as presented. We have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Item five is the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda this evening, you're approving the minutes from the regular meeting on November 25th, 2019 as presented. We're also approving general fund bills in the amount of $142,494.2 AP payroll checks in the amount of $8,553.73, for a total of $151,147.75, with checks numbered 64686 through 64728, and ACH transfers in the amount of $321,440.77, for a total of $472,488.52, with no checks voided, and additional bills in the amount of $233,887.10, with no checks voided, and sinking fund bills in the amount of $145,212.24, with no checks voided. In addition, you're approving personnel changes, resignation of James Phillips, bus mechanic and sub-driver, Jamie Mills, sub-bus driver, Alyssa Troya, cheer coach position, adding additional assignments to Adam Ricker, his mock trial sponsor, and Mike Walsh as eighth grade boys' basketball coach.
Support.
We have motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mrs. Bobsey. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item six is reports. Start with student of the month.
Our elementary student of the month is Alyssa Gilson. She's here, so she was nominated by her fifth grade teacher, Ms. Habs, who writes, "Alyssa comes to school every day, ready to learn and give 110 percent. She is one of the kindest and sweetest girls I have ever come across. She always shows respect and warmth to her teacher and classmates. She is the perfect role model for our school. Keep up the great work. We are so very proud of you."
Okay. I'll go ahead and do the Memphis junior and senior high school students. Our junior high school student of the month is not here though. She's at basketball meeting. So we're gonna just kinda honor her at the next meeting if it's okay with you. So our high school student of the month is actually two students. So I would like to have Riley Roy and Emma Lehman come on over. Both Riley and Emma volunteered to become the voice of Memphis during our morning announcement. So they took over my job. As the little teachers complain, they're tired, they're gonna be drawn out in the morning, they might zone out a little too early for my tone. The girls are definitely very excited, very, very, it's refreshing in the morning to hear that, I think. They do an excellent job of greeting our staff and students with excitement and a positive attitude to start each day. Both girls are very caring about their fellow classmates, and can always be seen with a smile on their faces. They are the first to volunteer their time, always willing to go the extra mile to give someone an extra hand. Riley is very involved in her dance, while Emma is very active in Memphis Cheer. And this is from the front office staff. We all feel that both Riley and Emma are perfect candidates for students of the month. So Riley and Emma.
Item B is Ms. Melstrom.
Good evening. Well, I invited Rob to be here tonight. Just to kind of catch us up on how he's going, we had a little conversation over the last meeting, so we wanted to make sure that she was here to update you on everything, on the progress, especially with all the turnover we've had, and also make sure all of the concerns that we've got. So I asked her to come give us a brief update on everything going on.
Okay. Sorry, I called in. I don't care my last year. I'm trying to keep it. Okay. So I just wanted to update you on our training schedule. Starting even before school, we had training on able-bodied math program for special education students, which was spearheaded by RISA. There was a committee that Memphis did participate in, and this program was chosen, and it was paid for by RISA, and the training was provided for by RISA. We are continuing to use that. We have a capacity building training with STAR, which stands for statewide autism research training. And what this helps us with is building capacity for students who have autism, and really all students. The strategies that we are learning in the training are for all students. Our second training, third training, is capacity building behavior team training. So we have two teams, a junior, senior high team, and then an elementary team. They each have four members on them. And what we're learning in math training is how to write functional behavior assessment codes, so that when the students are getting these documents, that we can identify the function of their behaviors, and then come up with strategies to help them build their behavior. To teach them replacement behaviors and social skills to help them get along in school and be able to pay attention and engage in instruction. We also have done SLD, which is specific learning disability eligibility training. So that's an eligibility category for special education, and it's quite a lengthy process to get that eligibility. So we had two trainings in there, and then a follow-up training. And we are continuing to work with the building principles to bring that along. It's a lot of gathering of data, a lot of intervention data, and testing data, state testing data, any grade, and kind of looking over time whether or not the student is showing that they have a specific learning disability. And we also have updated the whole of our eligibility, and so we've had people involved in that training and learning the eligibility criteria for otherwise helping. So that's for students who have a learning disability. We have two new staff, and so far, well, actually, three new staff. And we have provided training for two one and a half hour trainings, just with the three of them and myself, working on eliminate, which is our process for creating IEPs. It's a web-based process. And then Jennifer Venky is mentoring our new staff at the junior, junior senior high school at elementary and in Gonzales. And then, and I'll have my phone still. So, and then at the elementary, we have a school, and she's being mentored by Mike. So we've had staff meetings held before and after school. I had our transition trainer from RISA come out, Scott Sklerick, and work with our staff in transition, because most of our staff are new at the junior, senior, and transition is a piece of the IEP that costs about three secondary training. So you start focusing on what are we gonna do when we graduate. And we had one all-day staff meeting that Mr. Goodnight provided lunch, and we also leave them their prep time in the morning, so that when they came to the training, they felt like they had everything they needed to get started that day. And we trained on IEP writing, we trained on referral process. We've rounded up some of our processes for writing an IEP, and also for how we are documenting all the different supports that are entering. We also have written policies and procedures for our referral process, which is a process where students are brought to us, and someone feels that they need an evaluation, either a parent or a teacher. And also our referral process, K12, as well as zero to five. Those are two different processes, zero to five. Those referrals are generated sometimes from early, which looks at kids from zero to three, and then if they feel like they need special education services, they refer them to us. We've also just started to utilize RISA's guidance for least restrictive entitlements. So when we're looking at moving kids from generalized to specialized, or within some different special education programs, then we have a process by which we look at their growth, their growth goals and objectives, also their, how the placement would help them obtain their goals and objectives. So it's basically focused on whether or not their specified goals and objectives are being met, and whether or not we need to move them to a different environment. Future projects, we're working on the accommodation tracker. So the accommodation tracker will help us track the accommodations that are within special education students' IEP. And accommodation is something that would help the student access general education. So for instance, if a student has a doctor's degree, they would maybe get the test read to them, maybe their assignments need to be read to them. If they have a deficit in math, we might use, let them use a calculator on a test in order to help them with their math fluency. For a kid with a physical disability, we might give them extra passing time in the hallway. It is accommodations that are meant to help the student gain access to general education. So our tracker would, we've been talking with Port Huron, who developed an accommodation tracker, and it starts with a Google form, and on this Google form, you would have the student's information and all the accommodations that are included in their IEP. Once that is made for each student, then that special teacher, the special teacher, would take each one of those trackers and make a roster for themselves. Then the next step would be, they would share their individual Google form with the teacher who needs it. So the science teacher would get all the special education students' accommodations that are in their supplement science class, and they would create a roster. And then they would be able to access the tracker. So let's say that a student, you know, has an accommodation for, they have preference seating, they need a seat near instructions so they can focus. So, and then they might also need the test read to them, and let's say they need, are you putting that person?
Yeah, just given my ideas.
So this is the tracker. So you have their name, you would have an eligibility category, then date, and then their action yes or no. So this is done daily. And then their daily accommodations, so preference seating, closest to instruction, extended passing time, maybe two extra minutes between classes. And in that section, the daily section, so let's say that that's something that happens every day, we can pre-populate that to kind of cut down on having to go in and check, and then they would check it only if they did not provide that accommodation. And the next one is special accommodations, so allow test retake of score of 60 percent or less is earned in all subject areas, which means in every subject area that they have, they can have this accommodation. And then any extra notes. That all teacher would look at. So what this is helpful for is if a parent came to us and said, "I don't think my students' accommodations are being evaluated." So we would be able to go and retrieve this data, and you can actually get it in a, you can get it in a graph. So we would be able to provide that information to the parent. The other thing that helps us track accommodations that are working or not working. So you don't want to see an accommodation within an IEP that's not working. So we might, so we can also keep track of whether we tried this one, or we tried this accommodation. So this one worked, and so we're gonna keep that in mind.
So with the listening group, it's interesting, it's a daily thing, and there's a, that teacher is gonna have a list for Joe, that's who it is, and show us, teachers are giving accommodations every day. We had one that the teachers were signing up on, and they're like, so, there's a list of accommodations for this student, and each teacher sort of six hours, they'd say, "Yes, I did provide those accommodations." We need something to show a lot every day, instead of just saying yes. The other thing that we're talking to the teachers are, on this form, if they say no, there's gonna be a root for explanation. Not given today, if it's extended in testing, it would just be something you'd say no because the test was given. But if a student refuses, you're gonna put in there, refused, you know, make sure that the parent's aware about so, anytime this come up, that we can score in the evidence. And then if it's, sometimes they have to modify assignments, short assignments, teachers are gonna keep copied back. So it's gonna be a folder, again, if somebody came in, it's like, this one's not getting these accommodations, we can go back to see if the teacher's providing them. So we can go copy the parents, and if not, it is a much better process. Thomas has created, I'm investigating what's working on accounting. Port Huron took a lot of time to kind of get it up and running, but obviously they're gonna look at their student population and view. So we're at the point where the teachers are now starting to create forms for each student. So they're gonna have about 20 kids, they have to go through and create the forms for the teachers. And then hopefully, after break, or reduce it to all the staff, so they're all, daily, or an hourly thing, they're gonna have to go and check, make sure they accommodate for the student.
Accommodation tracker, you're already saying, is this something that can, parents will eventually have access to? Like, is it gonna run reports, like, monthly quarterly, where they can get those reports, or Skyward or something?
Well, not, they won't, it's not available for the, to get those stuff.
Through Skyward or nothing like that?
Because, you know, it reveals confidential information. So if you, if, the way that Port Huron runs it, and is the way I feel like we should run it here, is if a parent has a question about whether or not the students' accommodations are being implemented, then they would run that request, and they would create a report.
So it's gonna be parent request, or their accommodation tracker, and that's something that parents are gonna be informed about?
Yes.
Okay, we come up with where the new project is.
Once we get, we get it going, we get out a bunch of it out, so, yes, it sounds great. So that's kind of our big project for right now. And the other on the horizon project is STAR has a resource that helps us to differentiate output for students. So what that means is, so let's say we have a lesson on, I don't know, a lesson on ocean habitat, and we have a student that has difficulty accessing that, that lesson the way it is presented, it's a worksheet. We can accommodate the worksheet to get a different output, but still learn the same information. So we might give a word bank, or we might give a sentence somewhere, they put a word in, or we can even accommodate it down to yes, no, depending on the level of, you know, what the student needs. So it's based on student needs. I think that will help our co-teaching, our teachers, our special teachers, who are presented with this at the behavior training, because part of behavior is making sure you're seated, seated, and their instruction. So that should help us change every day, in instruction at every level of education. So Mr. Walsh had volunteered to have that. And that is.
Can I measure the effect here, because it's involved in different accommodations? Because each student can't, it's gonna have three or four on a sheet. So how do you know which ones are working and not?
Well, so, if they give the, if they're working, then they're able to access the curriculum, because that's the point of any accommodation, is going to help them to access the curriculum. So if they can't, you know, if they're reading, they've already got the set, and they can't read the material at the grade level, then we're going to read it to them.
Each student with an IEP has a set of goals, so, and that's kind of how you judge if an accommodation is working, if they're making those goals or priorities, those are goals. Besides second grades.
Yeah, oh, I do, if I had, if I had four accommodations, I'm trying to figure, how do I understand it, sitting in front of the classroom is helping me, or the extra time at the beginning, or the, you know, I can overall say that these are helping and generally.
Right. So if the student is getting success, so, yes, his goals and objectives definitely need to be met, because that is the baseline for anything for a special education student. Focus on their goals and objectives. However, you know, there is the class that they're in, and whether or not they're having success in class, so are they turning in their assignments, are they continuing their assignments, are they, you know, how's the class, you know, how would they run their curriculum being now? Are they testing the class? Does that make sense?
Identifying which one.
It makes sense that overall, the overall accommodations are working or not, but not the individual accommodations. I may be helped out by sitting in front of the class. Maybe another accommodation is slightly detract. And so I don't know if there's any time to ask the student, which ones are helping and which ones aren't.
Sure, we do, because we invite them into the IEP, starting in eighth grade, they're, it's an appropriate age to invite them into the IEP. And I have, I have done a couple of IEPs that have had teachers that have had them in positions that I have done the IEPs. And we invite the student, just, you know, what, that's a discussion I am starting to ask them. So these are the accommodations that are in your IEP. Tell me what, you know, does this company, how is this company? And they're quite articulate, and they're talking about this company. And for younger students, again, you're noticing whether or not they're able to engage in the curriculum. So I think, you know, I think maybe that's the answer that you're looking for, is, you know, are they engaged in the curriculum? If you see a student sitting there, not able to engage in the curriculum, maybe not. So that's how we use accommodations, to help them engage.
I have a couple of questions. The training, there's, how's the training going on?
I know.
Yes. So parapros, are they included in that training?
You know, we have not had specific training for parapros. They have had, like, CPI training, and I know that they were at our first stage training, but not working with students, so that should definitely, definitely be on the horizon.
Okay. So that's something that we're gonna be working on, where they do spend majority.
They do.
With these students too, so it's probably, that's those trends. And then other with the IEP, so who exactly is part of writing the IEPs?
Okay. That is the preschool teacher, the special teacher, the generalized teacher. They basically are interplay, crafting the IEP. So they all have conversations about accommodations that may or may not be working, what else can we do to engage the student, what goals and objectives are appropriate for the student. I know that teachers, like, for instance, the math teacher has had lengthy conversations with Jennifer Venky about what are appropriate goals and objectives that we can use in their IEPs for math, because, you know, high school math is kind of a tough subject, and you're writing your goals and objectives for the whole year. So they collaborate on that, but the preschool teacher is mainly the one who's crafting the IEP. And once the IEP is written and presented to the parent, they let me know that it is ready to be published, and I review it, and if the parent gets some inspections, they go and do inspections, and then letting the parent know that means we just make some corrections so that they're aware, because you don't wanna make any changes in the IEP unless the parent's aware.
Okay. So it's not, like, the training's not going across the board to every general teacher or anything like that?
Or IEP writer.
Yeah, right.
No. Yes, the differentiated output, though. So, and I think that's where I, that we will benefit. We co-teach, you know, throughout the district, and actually, it's very research-based, and it's a little bit difficult and trustless. So I think that, when we, when I was working with the teachers at the beginning of the year, they wanted some ways to really be able to collaborate and to bring some strategies to the students so that they're more engaged. And that's what I'm hearing from teachers that are having a hard time getting kids engaged in the differentiated output, I know will help.
There's a lot to add, there's a lot of training there to try and soak in. I think I'll have to dig into your report a little bit more, and I probably have some questions for you.
Absolutely.
Have you gotten any feedback from the teachers that are taking the training, what they like, what they don't like, some successful rates?
Yeah, I, you know, I think, they've been open and receptive. I think sometimes change is hard, you know, if, you know, I'm changing a few policies and procedures based on special education, and I think, you know, I'd be lying if I didn't say it would be hard in some cases, but for the most part, I think they're pretty grateful for the information, and that we are working together, and I always tell them, you know, we're gonna, we might be changing this, but we're gonna be working together, and so far, it's gone pretty smoothly. I mean, I guess, you know, Susan and Matt can speak to whether or not, you know.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of training, staff has been, they had a lot of training, so not necessarily with us, because it's a little difficult for them, but mostly preparing us different. They're happy to know the new things that we're having spring in, and they're working hard to adjust for that.
And the behavior training, you know, and the STAR training, that's a lot of information, so we want to make sure that we're gonna be able to sit down and talk as a team about that after the training. I think sometimes that's what happens with trainings, is, you know, you get the training, and you go back to school, and then you get super busy. So we are, as a staff, making sure that they're going to sit down and revisit the training and talk about where we're gonna implement the training pieces.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Melstrom? There's a lot, a lot of information there, like I said, we're gonna have to reflect on that a little bit more. All right, onto the principal reports.
All right. It's been so, you know, December's a very fun time at the elementary school. It was really great to see kind of a season of giving by our staff. Mrs. Habraker, along with our fifth grade student of the month committee, did a gently used clothing, outdoor clothing, and money drive for kids in distress, so, I don't know, you saw it on Facebook, but we had a room full of clothes and roots and hats and gloves, and she, we also raised over $611 that she brought yesterday to kids in distress this end of the calendar, so that was awesome. Student council, Amy Manning, and so Brandy Lehman, also did a canned food and toiletry drive. Those things really stay local to our community, and that was nice to see. It's always so heartwarming at this time to see the bags and the canned foods and the money that's coming, and it's awesome. Our staff has participated in the Little Spirit Month. We have the 12 Jeans of Christmas, with a little calendar that we created, just to kind of have some. Just kind of some funds and staff, they had to dress up like with their team, and each team then was bringing snacks to the lounge. So we had a good pick-me-up to get us through the crazy December months. Along with some of the things that are going on, our report cards went home on December 5th. And we were also able to have our next round of SAT meetings. Those are SAT meetings, our student assistant team meetings. This time, we were able to sit as an entire team. It's hard to kind of schedule, there's usually one or two people missing with us. And we were able to have our whole intervention teams sit together and kind of bounce ideas off of each other and look at the data. We changed around our wingtime intervention groups for our last intervention push before our next round of NWA testing, which is coming up once we return from break. And then at that time, we'll sit down again and look at the data and adjust interventions and planning moving forward. Our December early release day was that with our recent consultant, Jennifer Evans. The last meeting, I spoke about our impact walks, and our goal coming out of that was aligning our questioning and purpose of our questions to our read-alot purpose. So really just kind of working and deeply focused on the purpose of, and what we want our students to do. So that was what the training was on. And then the teachers had some time to work with their grade level team with their big old stack of read-alots they were going to do for these next three weeks moving forward. So they were able to work with their grade level and kind of plan out the read, plan out the read-alots and have a consultant and myself there to answer questions that they might have. And then next month, I'm preparing a presentation for you about the impact walks and kind of that whole process. I know there were a few questions around it and how it looks, and what we'll be doing with those moving forward. So we'll be excited to share that with you next time. Your turn.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for having me again here tonight, board. I missed the last, I just miss you guys. But back for here for December. A couple of things I wanted to point out really quick. Our sting shop is open. They were saying that there's some Facebook posting, some Twitter posting about our new store. It is actually right out here, out the doors, right here just past the bathroom, and I'll let you inside. Be a chance to check it out here before we... It is a really nice little place. It was developed on the ideas from students in Mrs. Phillips' junior summer class. There were two students that had the idea, came to me, and they thought it should be. Talked about a great spot for it, kind of looking for areas in the building, and ended up settling over here. It's been open just this week. And we have preview last Thursday and Friday for the students, and it's open this week during sting hour. And we've had some success there. And Mrs. Phillips was telling me some of the students' colors, and it's looking pretty good for just a couple of days open. They're really excited, we're excited about it. And we're looking to kind of talk more about hours of opening and times of opening after this break. But if you get a chance, looking to, so if you're up in the area, if you're up in Drake, or if you're just, I think there's a little group there. It's like, we all, Joe did it all, and it's all good. It came out Saturday, so we can, we can, we can just, a little office or a store drove to a store, so we're excited about it. Also, to kind of piggyback on the giving season that Mrs. Sandkens was talking about, Memphis was able to partner with Quality Lumber and one of our, our quality lumber associates is here tonight, Mrs. Gross. There were two events that, well, I guess two, I don't know if you call them events, not events, two, two things that happened.
Projects.
Two projects we were working on. There was some duffel bag decorating that the students did, that Joe read about, maybe a little bit in your notes. Most recently, a hygiene drive as well. And Mrs. Gross, so she partnered with a group of 10 students from here, which I don't know if anyone even made it tonight. But there's a picture of them all right there, and Mrs. Gross in the middle there with them. They, Mrs. Gross, do you want to talk about it really quick? Just kind of give a quick, quick background on what that, what they did there?
Quick, grind up.
Yeah, yeah, well, as quick as you can, I guess.
Well, first of all, yes, I want to give a huge shout out to the company, I work for Quality Lumber, Building Home Sales. We're just north of our town in Grashit. They not only purchased all the duffel bags, which came with a teddy bear, a stuffed animal, or, oh, that's the same thing. A teddy bear, a blanket, a hygiene kit, and then crayons and coloring book. And the reason why we did that is because when kids are removed from the foster home, they literally get like a garbage bag, and maybe, you know, they don't have personal items to take with them. So the goal in this was to deliver it to the, it actually ended up going to kind of the foster kids. And so when they remove children from the home, that they have some personal items to take with them. Really cool side note, there was a child in the group. And by the way, I wanted to work with 10, I won't put it quite as boldly as I did to you, but 10 challenging students. And that could be in any capacity that in the classroom, not necessarily behavior, but, you know, whatever. Those are the kids that don't get paid to do things, honestly. They're the ones that just aren't involved in something, and those are the kids I wanted to be part of something. So this one little boy that was in there, he, when I was talking about, he said, "I was in foster care." He said, "And what you said is true. When I left my home, I only got to take three things with me." And I said, "What were they?" And he said, "Go into a room and see, and wear a blanket and stuffed animal." And then I said, "You know, that's, thank you for sharing that," and he said, "That's two of the things that are in this bag." And so, and then he went on to share, you know, how we've been adapted and such. But anyway, so this duffel bag had like a removable sign on it. And my company bought the bag, brought the stuff, and the kids decorated with that. And then my sister-in-law hooked me up with friends in foster care in McComb County. So the bags went to kids in McComb County. So when I was there, I asked the gal that was running it, I said, "What's the number one thing that you don't get for your foster kids?" And she said, "Hygiene items, like, you know, Dove Body Wash and that kind of stuff." So then I said to these 10 kids, "What do you guys think about doing like a hygiene drive?" So we did it here, and we did it at work, and between the two places, we got two big boxes of stuff. And so, I was with those as well. And it was interesting, though, because we, I had like two people that cheered the drive, and then we got together and made signs. So it really just, honestly, I appreciate you so much letting me do that, because it totally made my day just to spend time with these kids. And they were absolutely awesome. They were super cool, it was just great. And I would like to do something like us together with those kids. And the fact that we were able to keep it all in McComb County. And then the kids were coming up with ideas. And I saw them at lunch last week, you know? They were saying, "Well, I was thinking we could do this, and I was thinking we could do that." And then this one girl sitting across the table goes, "Well, I'd really like to be part of this, so, but I was, we'll talk, but my wheels really act good." So anyways, just thank you for letting me be some part of a super fabulous thing, yeah, thank you.
No, thank you. And, and Mrs. Gross, the students were excited when she would come in, and we'd call them down, and we were excited to have little meetings. And we did it mostly during our sting times, so we didn't interrupt their, their learning, but they just, kids were excited to be with us. So, thank you, I got to tell Mrs. Gross, and all of you, you made a good job, made a good job. Also, last week was our blood drive. Somebody came by, donated blood, thank you. And that was run by our NHS, National Health Society, Mr. Mosheri. So again, more and more giving back, I guess, it's, it's, it is. Holiday concert this Thursday, 7:00 PM. I know you're planning to be there. Mr. Ash has some, an excellent outfit this year. See that? I believe his outfit will be, he will be wearing Officer Guthrie's clothing line. Guthrie has a store that helps run as a friend, and they have clothing, so he's going to be wearing some of this this year. Definitely come out, check it out. And, and that's about it. We had our Christmas cookies with the principal in here, it was a little B, and we have monthly. It was our biggest turnout so far, we had eight parents in here, which was...
Double?
It was double, it's been double every time, two, four to eight, all right? So the next round, folks, and I please ask that you check it out, it's going to be chili with the principal. And January 3rd at 6:00 PM in cafeteria, or, maybe cafeteria, it's chili, please. We will be making, we will be home making chili.
Are you making chili?
I will be working with some of them, making chili. I'm good, I'm okay at chili, but my recipe's not as good as someone else's, I know. So, we'll be working together for that, but please, if you want to come out there, that'll be on the 30th on the evening. So, that's all I have for you, and I just wanted to tell the board, happy holidays.
Yeah, the sting store, I, you know, I think we need to continue to foster that, you know, entrepreneurship. I think that, I really liked that story, it's a great story. And the, the bags as well, that was, that was really great to see that in newspaper, and I hope that becomes a thing here.
Yeah, that came from, I think I called because I was asking for some lumber. I wanted to go pick up some lumber and build some of those benches we were talking about, and it turned into...
Well, actually, I do have to give Matt credit, though, because I think I already told you this. I actually contacted the principal of a different school, and before you, and he wasn't real comfortable with me. So I don't have time for that. So, when I contacted Matt, like, literally, like, he was like, boom, boom, chop, 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 like, yep, yep, yep. And so that's, we ended up doing that, and then, because we donated, my company donated the lumber and stuff, which is a local company, just to put a plug for them, that we do, you know, we have a huge showroom, we do renovation projects. What's that?
Where is it at again?
No, anytime you're ready, you know where this is. Oh, are you mutually, oh, okay. A lot of people have heard of us before, but yeah, we do kitchens and, you know, have self-wearing noodles and all that kind of stuff. But, and we're already talking about doing something with bikes, I already kind of put the plug into my box in the spring. Yeah, I already...
Yeah, keep that, keep that simple. That's toward the end. Yeah, so, thank you again.
Yeah, it's great, thank you.
Matt, on here, I see on your notes that we're on his duffel bag protection devices. Now, that's something I seen in an article on Live that when schools have started, they seem to have great success with it. Have you guys have anything back on that?
Uh, yeah, we do have a quote. I actually brought a few recently today to look over on the yellow quote we were talking about the other day. And we think we can do a little bit better on the price. So that's why we kind of had a conversation, discussed our need, and that we...
Is there like one company that's basically monopolizing it right now?
Uh, no, I think there was a couple that we were looking at and talked about. This one, I think had the best, the most, I had a local company reach out to me, so they pretty good quotes and stuff. I don't know how many companies are out there that make these.
Yeah, I just seen that the one company from the article, and I looked into the company to kind of see what they're about, too. They seem to have good success, so I didn't know if that was the one that you looked into or not.
One of the companies, well, first course is called Lights. They're the reseller, I don't know what...
Yeah, that was a...
Yeah, but however, no, that's our, we're working through that right now, I'd love to hear something.
I think that'd be great with the pandemic going on right now.
And that's something, again, Mr. Riss, we're gonna chat about. We just chatted about this week, and I gave you some numbers, and I love it, that was a good one.
Thank you. We're onto business director.
Good evening. Not a time to report on tonight, but some things that have gone on last month. I was able to attend the St. Clair, McComb Business Officer meeting. Again, it's a really nice group, over 50 other professionals, and we're all just single-handed on that. So a lot of good networking, able to go on there. Those are business directors, or St. Clair County, obviously. They had a really nice presentation, Michigan State Police Cyber Crime Division was there. And gave about a 45-minute-long presentation on different type of, types of cyber crimes that are out there. Just a really good reminder that there's classrooms everywhere. So that was nice to hear. I will be attending my fifth session of the MSBO, or M, yeah, MSBO Business Managers Academy. That continues to be a really good resource, and I'm very thankful that it was approved to send me there. It's been really nice being able to meet and sit with other individuals in the same position on that in the profession, and be able to kind of mentor each other on it, and have a leader in, the main name is Doug Newcomb, who's been just a really good resource for myself and all the other attendees. One of the major things that we're working on this month was Brad and I have been working together on a five-year budget. Different scenarios with different accounts and different state funding. Was able to put that together and meet with the negotiating team, and throw some scenarios, and discuss various things. And I brought some items that we'll discuss later, kind of expand on the discussions that we're having. Various reports that were due by the end of the year, annual disclosure statement, file finding statements. Transparency reports have all been updated on the website, annual facility settlement reports, those have all been submitted. So, to date, we are all, all set for all reports and filings that are due by the end of the year. And then this, actually tomorrow morning, we're going to be attending the St. Clair County Business Officers Association. And one of the things, the main topic we're going to be talking about is there is a new pilot report that is going to be due to the state of things for access, possibly, or... And kind of, sometimes we have that state of piloting, and it kind of affects for good and bad for this, this particular report. A lot of questions arising from this report, and all of the business officials will meet tomorrow and discuss, and be able to contact each other. That's going to be the next. One of the other things I did was, we had heard back from primarily all the municipalities, but for a couple still waiting to make sure that they had received our notification that we're going to be living this summer tax loving 2020. So I did make sure and reach out that they did receive our letter, and nothing we're planning on doing. And was able to, 100% of the municipalities have received it all. That was good. And, and then just began the review of all accounts, and kind of looking at A2 adjustments now. And will continue to do so until the A2s present.
I'm just wanting to thank you for the quick response on cash.
Oh, absolutely.
Procedures, I think that's probably something we should print, put in the boards, and ask her to find it, all cash. How cash is dealt with, the different departments talking about it.
Yeah, and that was, that actually, I appreciate it because it gave me a good opportunity to really talk and talk to the people that need a little cash to make sure that, you know, we talk at the annual audit, and all of these procedures are reviewed with auditors. But it's nice to kind of check throughout the year and make sure that the procedures are in place, are truly being followed, so that's good.
Thank you.
Just some notes from other directors, technologies in there, athletic, these transportation. Do you guys have any feedback, or any questions?
Item E was the MASB for self-evaluation report. So we're going to talk about that in our January meeting, kind of look at our answers. Talk about areas that we want to target coming year to address. There were something we were online and on, or close to it, and there were some things that we're very scared. So we're going to step through those and see what areas we need to address the board. But I appreciate everybody taking the time, it was pretty a lengthy process to go through. A lot of the questions, I think, were some good thought on things that we need to address. All right. Do you have any audience participation? We're onto correspondence. So the first item is the true law notes. Just some highlights in there, maybe talk about the IEP, and how short the school days have got those, and the four components, those student annual goals. Continue to, to talk about down there at the bottom. So it's good that we're doing all this training and seeing all that law around those IEPs.
Interesting article about the teacher coaching, the, 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 the employee, the teacher, and the coach. There are a lot of them.
So, does anybody have anything else on the notes? And once again, the article on the, decorating the bags. Great to see that happening in Memphis. Encourage that to continue. Um, we're onto item nine, old business. So first up, we have, um, A N O L A policy ninety-one thirty, public complaints, adoption.
I'll make a motion to adopt the N O L A policy number ninety-one thirty, public complaints presented.
Motion by Mrs. Boxton, supported by Mr. Parry, discussion? Just wondering if, um, we had added those, um, three references in that policy. I think there's one other one that we may want to include, sixteen sixty-two. So we could pull up that policy and see if we want to pull that in as well, as a reference. It's in the top of the policy we already adopted. Yeah. I think that's a very general anti-corvassment one. I know the other ones you guys added in for the, for various staff support function.
Basically, all three of those are very identical policy, but just for different purposes, this.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to, so I'm asking if you change your motion. Based on addition.
What, you want to add which policy to it?
Sixteen sixty-two.
Sixteen sixty-two. I'll make a motion to adopt the N O L A policy number ninety-one thirty, public complaints as presented with the addition of policy sixteen sixty-two.
Motion by Mrs. Boxton, supported by Mr. Parry, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next up, we have N O L A policy twenty-four sixty-four programs for gifted students, adoption.
I make a motion to approve, uh, N O L A policy twenty-four sixty-four programs for gifted students.
Motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mrs. Durst, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, N O L A policy seven thousand through seven thousand five hundred fifty, property adoption.
I'll make a motion to adopt the N O L A policy, number seven thousand to seven thousand five hundred fifty, property adoption as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Boxton, supported by Mrs. Durst, discussion?
So I saw in the technology director's report, um, that he looked through this, uh, and made some edits. Is that complete? I know that was one of the, I know that was one of the things, but we wanted to make sure that you were good with everything that you said there for the technology.
Yep, I spent quite a bit of time going through.
Anything of note?
Um, not especially, a lot of it is, uh, similar to what we've had in the past as far as our staff and student accepted the use of policies. There's a couple of things in here that I feel that we need to, it's gonna be like an ongoing process to get, I don't know, to speed on. Live accessibility is one I'm trying to spend a lot of time on, because it's new to me. So, and I'm learning it, and, um, it's gonna be, uh, every year, I think they change what's, what's appropriate or what's recommended for the website. So, um, trying to learn as I know, um, so that's just, uh, a whole thing for the year.
I know you've got Mike London kind of talked about, you know, Snapchat. Brian, are you involved with that?
I haven't heard about that.
Yeah, Snapchat isn't really something they're accessing at school, most of it's happening at home, and then it just kind of carries them to the school day.
We presented always on at junior high, high school. And now we're in China, social media, the younger, fourth grade students with phones and access to social media. So Susan made a call and we're back to that. Yeah, well, one of our policies actually had apps and things access on our, on our devices, and we do have live ads.
And it's blocked, those, those courses are blocked.
Right, yeah, all lessons are live, students can access any social media here on our devices now. They've got phones, they've got mobile data plans, so, um, our policy says that, um, if they're doing any of that stuff here, then it could be actually taken. And, about as far as we're looking at.
I know this is a probably a bigger question than some of the others, but seventy-five forty-one disaster recovery plan. You know, we talked about this a little bit, about what happens if, uh, that school building down, or the administration building goes down. What's the, we have a plan in place, we, we, we've, we've, we've x-ed all of this out of seventy-five forty-one, is there a plan somewhere else?
What we, what we, what we do, what we've done for a while now is we have, all of our data is stored at the high school here. Our backup is stored at the elementary school. My thought is if I, if I lose a building, I've got a backup there. If I lose that building, then it's just a backup, I've got our data. If we have something where we lose both buildings, um, I always just thought we'd definitely have all that data.
Looks like, okay, no, it's good to know, we didn't know that last meeting, so that's good to know. Awesome, is the backup like every night, or is that a weekly backup?
It's every night, um, some things are backed up weekly, some things are backed up even during the day. Um, central office files, those are backed up two or three times a year.
Just, I've seen it before, so if I have a corrupt file here, I back it up and I corrupt our backup, how do you recover it?
If you keep versions, if, if you.
So you go to a safe version from?
You can go back to any day.
Eleven thirteen nineteen.
I keep daily backups for, for a period of time, and then, and then it's weekly, and then it's monthly.
Right, I appreciate you thinking.
He's excited to have you here.
I'm setting for fifty, talk about, uh, maintaining continuous inventory and, um, do the other super plan to ensure that, that's accurate.
I meant something like that.
Any further discussion on those policies? Once again, we have motion by Mrs. Boxton, supported by Mrs. Durst, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item ten is new business, um, A within that is GSRP contracts of approximately three and a half percent raise proposal.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna do, go on a discussion first.
Look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a three and a half percent increase of GSRP teacher contracts, not the associate contracts.
Motion by Mr. Parry, supported by Mrs. Boxton. Discussion?
This is the group that we were waiting to see if the state would increase, GSRP is a grant program from the state for early childhood, four-year-olds. Um, so we've been waiting to see if they were gonna give an increase, so we've also, the budget did not change for that, so, um, I asked Sandy Pavlov, she's the head of that program. To look around, to contact their locals, to see what we have as far as comparison. It came back that our, our staff is well undertaking that, asking for new teachers and our associate teachers. So, Sandy Laura and Adam and I, we sat down together and kind of brainstormed a little bit, take a look at it, to see what we can do within reason to give them a raise. To kind of start making them more competitive. As we looked at it, bringing this three and a half percent to increase our newest lead teacher to V A one, so it'd be equivalent of our, our step one teacher here. And then, Cheryl Levine, that's right here for, this is the fifth year lead, that would take her to V A two, so it's, it's a step up. It does give them, obviously, a little bit more compensation. We expect the GSRP budget to increase in twenty-one, twenty, or twenty twenty-one year. But again, it's something that we really have tried to look at that and keep those costs within that budget. Currently, General Fund does support the program by about thirteen thousand dollars. This is an increase of another thirty-five hundred dollars for the remainder of the year, we start, um, January thirteenth, to pay a decent effective on. The other thing we looked at is just some, just moving some different items in that program around. So, we will be looking at that budget, it's something we have to apply every year for that grant, so we'll look at it and see if there's any other way we can, um, increase our teacher salaries and see what we can profit from somewhere else. Basically, what it would do is we can increase the salary, it's still gonna have some impact on the general fund, because a lot of the dollars are given for that program.
Do you have a breakdown of the budget for the GSRP?
I did not make copies, but I sure did. Adam likes to print the papers.
Well, you, you can just email it.
Well, we just sent it out to you. So basically, um, we are grant, we grant over two hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, and we're extending this year up right now. I'm sorry, two hundred nine thousand, we're extending to twenty-two. So yes, I can, I can send this out. You just have really good eyes right now. No matter how big of a spreadsheet it is.
That thirteen thousand that you said is already being pulled from the general fund, that's already was projected in our budget or anything like that, that's not anything that changed that for us?
Nothing new, except the additional.
I think it's important to invest in these teachers, because I think in the GSRP program, if we're gonna want to retain teachers and become a little bit competitive even, we need to kind of invest in them. Because we're gonna have constant turnover, and the program's not gonna grow.
How many are impacted?
Two lead teachers and two associate teachers. Off our hundreds of dollars, under the average. You came up with three and a half percent, that was. Oh, eight thousand dollars. And this brings, uh, so within, one of them will be within seven there, about one about six. Risa actually handles most of the districts in our public GSRP programs, so they have a related opportunity to, but, and just out of that, they actually put in their teacher.
Can you explain that, Risa?
Well, we contacted them, so they have a court here on, um, Myersville and K P. I think it's the other way. So, as the administration of the program, they do charge about, I think it was one point two percent on top of that, so they could do some things, they're still gonna be a cost. Or, if you look at our budget, there's still gonna be a cost for what's going on here, and that's, so they come out, they would help with the evaluation process. They would be the overseers, help with a number of other things, but it wasn't a great cost. They've given us some input on how we can try to adjust our budget. We currently have a third, so it's, uh, actually, instruction rate, so a third unit splits two or two GSRP rooms. They don't have that since we're at this service, so it's something we're working on, we do like that support, it's nice for our personnel to be available. So they said it's possible, and look at adding two additional seats, things for showing, that makes a higher competition, because there's a lot of that.
I know we're really looking at Cheryl Levine too, because even at Fort Huron, she was the director of that program, and so she's very knowledgeable in this area, yeah.
She did a great job, both of them really did a nice job.
Any further discussion? Motion by Mr. Parry, supported by Mrs. Boxton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B is student two thousand nineteen dash twenty dash one disciplinary hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the suspension, it was due in two thousand nineteen dash two dash one, for a period of hundred eighty days.
Would be the record this year.
Remain at school years?
Hundred, hundred and nine, well, we got hundred and ten, hundred and nine. That's right now, so we just say the remainder of the year.
Remain or the year.
Sorry.
Motion by Mrs. Boxton, supported by Mr. Parry. Further discussion?
Um, as you know, we had an incident that occurred last week, Matt and his team did a outstanding job getting to the bottom of it, the, the authorities involved. So the next part was sitting down and figuring out what's the best for the student, what's the best for the district. Um, so we sat down, the team was last week, and started brainstorming expulsion, rape, patient, long-term suspension, long-term, what we're looking at. New year expulsion, it's a hundred and eighty days, hundred and eighty school days, if they're not allowed to apply for it in the districts, they're not allowed to sign this support. So that would bring that student back this time, next year was really missing out on a whole year. And then if you came back in December, a school year, starting in December, you're really missing another semester, so it really costs about three semesters. As we talked about it too, you know, the importance of safety, so, um, we talked about, if you leave long-term suspension, students not on campus, but it's still a law to justify this support. So you can do, um, on school, so students, um, as part of their reenactment, some of the behavior plans, and, you know, some expectations, what we'd like to see happen over that time period. It, it, it's just a really good fit, Matt and his team came up with a solution, they have some scenarios, they sat down with the family, talked through it with them. And the family was in agreement that, um, going to an online curriculum for the remainder of the school year, not even part of any activity during school. So I think it's a, it's a good fit, it's a good solution, and it does help us.
Is there a plan in place for the transition back to school year next year?
Yes, it's, it's not a signed plan, but yes, we have, not requirements, but some, um, recommendations, so that they, when they come back, we can say that they have gone through some of the process that we're in. Parents have been very supportive.
So this is the first incident we've had, I've, I've been sitting, so therefore, four of the seven have been sitting, too. So, my only question would be, um, are we consistent? Obviously, the incident is, um, definitely is the first incident in its sky, uh, are, are we consistent?
Yes, yes, so we have gone both ways. We have had incidents where there was a expulsion, um, recommendation that was overturned by the board to do a long-term suspension. We've also had, it's also not held, so the thing that we've seen in common is that the student is removed for the remainder of that. Just gives some time for us to work with the student, to make sure that they're getting help needed, and that some of the recommendations for re-enrollment occurs are in that.
Of course, the sub factor, we're all factored in. Of course, the sub factor, we're all factored in. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Bobstein, supported by Mr. Parry to approve the suspension for the remainder of the school year as presented for student two thousand nineteen dash twenty dash one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. To superintendent comments?
Two things I wanted to talk about. At last meeting, we talked about facility walk-through between Mr. Cooper and you, we have not taken up on that policy for that. I had sent an email, I know that several board members do intend to attend a Christmas concert on Thursday night. I didn't know if anybody was available, so I thought at five, five-thirty, spend an hour, hour and a half, what do you guys want to do, walk-through? You can't have more than three, just so I know the provision is going to be Marty Christie, Dave, or David we have?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
I can do a question.
Thursday, and Thursday, I do appreciate it, so we got that. I gave that on to Mr. Cuget, I think it's been all handled on that. So if anything, I know Amanda and I spent, oh, I don't know, forty-five minutes walking through, taught a few things that haven't been taken care of too, so we'll meet one hundred five o'clock.
And if you feel strongly you want to do it, you know, I'll step out.
I do have some strong thoughts about.
Okay, sure.
About the maintenance, but.
No, that's fine, I will step back.
That'd be great. So we'll do it at five o'clock, we'll start at high school. Okay?
Are you in both buildings?
Yeah, yeah. Great. Just an update, I touched on it a little bit on Friday final, so there's a thirty-one M grant. This grant is money to the local ISDs or RISAs to help with, meant about the needs of students. So St. Colton, Risa applied for this grant and was rewarded it. So they identified us as an empty, as districts in need of support in social emotional learning. We will be getting a social worker two days a week, starting in January, that will be out to work with our general ed students, doing small group, meeting with those students and just meeting with everybody. So much needed support, it's great, it's completely great for us. Maura Tartan Young, CMH, was working at CMH, was hired by Risa, so she'll be coming to us two days a week, take that two days a week. She's actually going to be in district on Thursday afternoon to meet all of our staff and the kind of board requirements, but a great thing that if we're able to secure for the remainder of this year. This grant has a lot of support, so we see it sticking around for a while. So originally, there was thought that they'd be some match programs, there's no need, no required much in GSRP. That ties in great with what CMH is working with us to get another support for our junior high students, come up do some small groups. They've had some staffing changes, so they won't have anybody coming out until January, but they'll have additional support there. It will not have any impact on any of our current employees, it's just added need or added support for the need we have, so it's great to have CSRP. St. Chopper, Matt said is open. January thirteenth, so that's the next meeting we have coming up. It was, it's going to be now for superintendent evaluation, superintendent expectations. But by policy, zero one five one, it should also be our organizational meeting because in that policy, it said it need to be within the first two weeks of January. And so we'll make sure that's listed as a topic for the agenda we go through and have to focus. We had several students, one, two, three, four, five, six students of ours. Oh, this one's not, okay. So we had four students that placed in the top. Two at Skills USA, the local competition was last weekend for the tech center, Baked Cereal for media advertising and design, Wendy Goldmewski, Wobieski, excuse me, for T-shirt design. Mechatronics was Connor Vagnal, and C and C building was Josh, Justin, Justin Harm. So those students will move on to the state level, so we'll see what's ahead with the , yeah. The other part was Mr. Christie and the drainage shower last year, our, our back. I talked to him again this morning, he's just trying to find time right now to get it in, we approved him to come out, do the work. He's, he's ready to go. Like he said, a few came on the last two weeks, they were up to the knees in mud and they did a good pass. So he's hoping that he can find a trencher that can handle a bit of the local frost if he can find the time to get it in here. So he's still planning on doing it, and we'll have it moving on as soon as we can. And I would keep the pulse of that process. All I have with this time.
Item twelve is the board roundtable.
Brad, I have included in my, one of my emails, a complaint that I have received about water in the restrooms coming up out of the drains and then apparently that same day, they had more than just water, we didn't see a data there.
Mr. Cuget? The men's bathroom in high school. The drain at, at that coming up through the floor, is that them all handled the drugs?
We've not been able to find anyone, there's a lot of drapes.
There was, there was pictures of, of school, like fecal matter, water on bathroom floors.
So, as soon as you sent it to me, he checked.
Your, your buildings, you know what we're talking about? I don't know, just pictures on the bathroom floor, water, fecal matter on it. So is that affecting you?
I haven't seen water since the one, the one.
Well, it's the day I sent you the email, so you're going to send us some, second, something like that.
Yeah.
At that time, the complaint was clear water coming up through the drains, sometimes it's dark colored. And then that afternoon, apparently, there was more than water that came up through the drains.
So we've had.
Nobody's reported it to me if there was, and I've never gone in there and seen that.
So no one reported it?
No. The email that you had, I sent to him, he went over and checked, and he pointed out to me that there is nothing there. We have had issues in that, that line.
In the boys locker room, you've had problems in there the past years where they plug up with water bottles, getting shut, flushed down toilets and stuff like that. This year, nobody's reported anything coming out of any boys bathrooms drains.
And we do now have Matt and Pete and Officer Gunnery checking the restrooms a lot more often, since we've had some analyzing in the bathrooms. So people have a better report if there's anything.
Matt, have you seen anything coming out of the drains?
I, no, not again, there was an event that occurred, and I think there was, we were talking about, the boys locker room, there was.
I'm not sure I have any pictures.
This is where.
Men's bathroom, boys' bathroom.
Yeah, oh, men's bathroom.
Locked.
I saw it in the boys locker room at a lot of occasion, men's bathroom, I don't know if you had, I talked about it before, it was a weird smell, I don't know if it was coming out, it smelled, and we kind of located, we kind of figured out, I think it was last year where we talked about, it was a smell, some of those guns that are fountain drinking on, some of those guns are the boys drain. But I, I believe that we discussed it, we're talking about, it's really, it just gets dry in there and also just flush in with the bleach water. And even today, yesterday, we had with our men's, and Mr. Gerson, they're called up to us, it's a peculiar smell in our office, and coming out of the men's bathroom drain with some sort of smell, it's pretty, pretty eerie. But we were, Mr. Pringle was here this morning, he flushed the drains as we've done before, and by the end of faith day, it was kind of figured out, and it smelled the issue.
Well, I have pictures of the water, but I understand someone else's pictures of material of some type.
And I too have seen the pictures, and it definitely looks, you know, it looks like fecal matter. So my point is, like, it came up, there was something there, wasn't properly cleaned, where the bath, I don't know what bathroom it is, I've seen the pictures.
Was it the blue tile floor or was it the white tile?
I just text you tonight and let you know.
The blue tile floor was in the locker room, I believe, that was the one that I know where they're putting, or something, something was, and then the next morning, Mr. Pringle was in there, he knocked the whole thing through, through the locker room, it wasn't anything. Sometimes in the boys bathroom, we'll call my scrum, it's Cuget, so there's a leaky, like a toilet leak, but the kids are always reporting on the floor. I don't think that where that is, it's more near the urinals rather than not the.
This was coming up from a drain?
Yeah, it wasn't coming from the drain, so.
It was had been during school?
I think, I think it was the, I think it's the basketball one we're talking about, if I'm.
Well, I would like to think if something came up, it was cleaned up, so someone must, somewhere along the line, someone was a girl.
But it's not good enough that it's just cleaned up, that's great, that's clean and properly, but then that's a situation that probably should be addressed, that crack should be known about, so that you can figure out why fecal matter.
Like I said, every year, we have to snake those drains out and pull a lot of bottles out. It happens once to five times a year.
Right.
Boys like to flush some things.
Yeah, I just want to know, like, if there's fecal matter coming up, it's being handled properly, properly, and then we're figuring out why it's coming up, it's not good enough to clean up.
We're notified about it, yes. Unfortunately, I mean, sometimes, you know, if the night crew's here, they'll clean it up and not, you might not even hear about it.
Right.
If they're not, if they don't, a lot of times, it'll, it'll back up, it will go down.
Right.
So it's just, they're done for, it doesn't look like it, you know? So they wouldn't, they may not know what, what it even was.
I wonder if we should set up a, like a maintenance ticket, even just a separate email account that Pratt and everybody has access to, so if somebody reports an issue, I don't know, I'm trying to solve here, but if we report an issue and then we, we don't know about it or this happens, time.
If it is, if they're referring to the one in the locker room, we were made, we would snake the drain out and pull a couple water bottles out.
On December fifteenth?
You know, it, yeah, it was, I don't, I don't know what.
But it was recent?
Well, no, actually, that was back in November.
Yeah, that's something, so, and we have one, and we got to worry about hygiene and everything else, but we, if we have an issue, get it reported, this way you say, hey, here's an open ticket, open email, and then it can actually have a response in the system says this one is closed out.
This is an issue that I brought up before, and that was that what is the process in place for recording maintenance, because it seems like there's a lot of communication where it needs to get dropped, so what's our process in place? The process that I believe that we discussed was in place is that filling out a form. And that, so it, you know, it doesn't seem like that process is being forced or something, maybe it's more just keep, keep doing phone calls, sending a message here and there. It doesn't seem like this process is really being enforced, so that I know if I fill this out, I can make a copy, send it over here, I have my copy, I sent it to you on this day, why has this not been handled? There needs to be like accountability along the way of this seems not being addressed, why is it not being addressed? Is it getting miscommunication to you, not getting to you? There's got to be this policy capacity in place for these issues.
Everything with that has been turned, and I believe has been addressed, even this issue.
But is it still just the phone calls, or are we?
There's a form that's submitted.
Are we still doing the, are we doing the forms, everyone's doing the forms, turning the forms in?
Teachers have been asked for maintenance requests, that they turn in a form. So we now also have Mr. Sawyer, just handling nothing but building requests like that. So he's going through the punch list, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys have any outstanding orders?
So we have, just like we're back, we've got a couple for Mrs. Delahoe and Al, and a couple for.
Sink.
Yeah, so, sinks, and, and that's really it, I mean, there's only two, I mean, I'll get the sheet from them, I'll assign a lot of priorities.
But you own your building, so you know what's going on.
And then I will put a level priority, and usually I put it in free range because it's, it just depends, it's a lot of, say, the sink, I don't always use, but we use it sometimes, and then I'll just, I'll pass it on afterwards, I'll sign it, so. If there's an emergency, you know, we're not, just to, it's not, it's not going to jump on that, oh, it's an emergency, I'll just, let me just, you know, hey, this is happening, you know, we handle it that way. But if it's something that teachers, you know, us here, we do the here one, two, I believe.
Right. Yeah, I just think it's important to have that accountability, and so like, if it's not getting communicated to him, it's not getting lost, like this is someone, you know, one of, someone underneath him, and they're not communicating back, one of your people aren't communicating back to you, there's too many chances for communication to get missed and stuff like that. That's why it's like we have this policy in place, it needs to be reinforced, emergency situation, a hundred percent take the phone call, but not everything's emergency.
We'll try and stress the system, see if we can recreate the issue, whether it's running all the water, you know, flushing several times or something, see if we can get it back up. Maybe it's a specific instance or combination of events that generates the issue. But once we determine where it's at, let's try and recreate it.
If you guys even sent me that picture, that we know exactly what drain, and we can figure this.
My understanding, the water issue is reoccurring, that in that in itself, we shouldn't have water on the doors.
Well, when Mr. Cuget investigated that the one time, it was, was not really a water problem or a student problem, so that's why we have our administration.
Well, if this is a student problem, he must have water issue.
Okay, and that's what I'm saying, if it was that.
It's not, it's not a small amount of water, I'll send him the picture.
Absolutely, that way he can make sure drain that, or sink that, specifically. I forgot to send it to my, one of my, Mr. Cooper asking about logs. Maintenance logs, I just.
Do we have to talk about?
Yeah, I can send it to everybody. Do you want to digital it right?
Any other board roundtable discussion items?
On a, on a good note, Mrs. Le, Mrs. Lever and Adam did an excellent job creating the courthouse, so trying to take account of the kids who were there, I've got, roughly say fifteen, fifteen kids, I got to see several different trials and. So you can see any history of his record getting all these guys on the line. All right, well, it definitely excited, I mean, because his dad was working at the courthouse.
Dad knows, his, his family is all either involved in court or the police, or they're working for.
His dad was a police, policeman for fifteen years, worked at great law school, in a trial in court, and it was the very last case for one of the judges, which is retired. And so they got to go watch it, it was, it was nice.
Great.
He's also now an announcer for the, for us, probably just getting shots in the launch of the class. All of his family did that, you come up through all the other parts.
We got lucky.
We got lucky.
Any further roundtable? Round two, date on the thirteenth, closed session, negotiations for the MEA collective bargaining unit.